All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get started.
Thanks Patty.
Welcome.
All right, we are now recording and it is 6:01 PM on August 19th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Halifax for not selecting. And the first thing we do after the call to order is ask for changes and additions to the agenda.
So yes, two things. Under correspondence, could we add, sign the contract for the auction, auction sale of the Ford F550?
Okay.
As we didn't do that, we looked at it, we never signed it.
Okay.
Um, and I also want to mention a quote that I got regarding an additional counterweight for the Escalator.
And if I could add a quick to the Deer Park conversation, we have another grant that I'd like to get authorization for.
Okay, is that gonna be a new business one though?
I guess it's new business. I mean, they're all old grants, so I consider them old business, but I don't know, whatever, whatever you think.
Okay, I'll stick it under new business for now.
Okay.
And then real quick, any discussion on the website, rough draftable. Everybody might have. Okay. Let's put it under correspondence, because I know it came through very recently. So, say preview. And there's also a couple of things in my email folder for correspondence that we should try to follow through on, which has to do with Ed Forley and a member of Rest of the Commons contacted me today. So, okay, so we got a lot, lot of little bits added to the agenda. Okay, yep. All right, so let's go ahead and get started with new business, which is the Old Home Day Road Closure Request from Patty Dow. I believe you received that in your information packet and Patty is here to talk us through it as well. So, Patty, take it away.
Okay, we are obviously, as you know, having a multi-day event. Thursday does not require any, any road closures as that is an off-site event. Friday, we are requesting the road to be closed. Probably no, you know, four o'clock would be best for probably through, say, 11:00. So we would be able to get the dinner time started and people moved in for the evening entertainment at the, I mean, only nearly needed from the Jacksonville Stage. Probably, probably through the community hall would be, would be the safest. Four o'clock is going to be tips and tricks for disc golf at the Halifax School Playground. And then five o'clock will be starting a couple hours worth of dinner time. And seven to 10:00 is going to be the Friday Evening Entertainment Band Midnight 30:00. So we request Friday evening. Saturday, we request all day, probably from 6:00 AM through, I would say, 10:00, I think that's what I wrote on that paper. I can't remember if it was 10:00 or 11:00. Starting the day with the, with the breakfast and then it goes all the way through all day long and the Saturday Evening Entertainment is a little earlier this year. It's going to go from six to, I think it's six to 10:00 with musical entertainment with classic connection. And then it's just, you know, cleaning up and getting everyone out safely. So I think that's why I put, or maybe it was six to nine, six to nine, and then 10:00 having the road open again. There will be a partial road closure in the morning hours for the 2K walk-run. Sarah Barnett is coordinating that with Mike. And that is going to be from, I think, 10:00, she'll have it blocked off before 10:00. And then as soon as the walk-run is done, she'll have the rest of it open. And that would be from the Jacksonville Stage corner by the school to Hubbard Hill, but I believe she's going to put cones in the road. So we don't need to close that road, really. She'll have all the caution signs up. And so that's Friday and Saturday. Sunday is the parade. I freshen my memory on the paper I wrote. But we, we don't really have any festivities started until, say, around 11:00 after the worship service at the Bible Church. Then we'll have to, you know, the, the starting of the parade will start to be lined up and that will be in the back parking lot of the school. And then the parade will go through Branch Road down past the community hall. And then the cars and floats will be lined up on the right-hand side of, I believe, Brook Road along the community hall section. And then reopening again, I would say by three. Festivity should be done at three.
Hey Patty?
Yes.
So Saturday, the closures, you want to start at 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM?
11:00, 11:00 would be best. That way we could get everybody out safely.
Okay, but just the full 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. There was, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you had a brief opening in the middle.
We're six to 10:00. No, no brief opening in the middle. Is, I think, is, I think I wrote six to 10:00 on Saturday.
No, you actually wrote, actually wrote seven to 10:00, just to be clear. You keep it. Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, my, my question is, has this been communicated to the fire department and to the residents who will be impacted? Because this is like an all weekend. How do I get my car, you know, out?
I usually, I usually send a letter to the village residents after we have this meeting. So I have that all ready to go. And everybody on the, on the village route will be getting my standard letter of the days and times.
Have you ever had pushback from them?
Um, I've had, I've had one landowner not too happy because she was concerned that her son was trying to run a business and he couldn't get people to come in and out safely, but it was resolved in a pleasant way, as far as I know.
Is there somebody new in the home, in the home, just to the, on the other side of the historical society?
I don't know. I thought that too.
There was, okay, there were a whole bunch of cars there and people that I, I mean, not that I recognize everybody in town, but it just looked like there was a swarm of new people coming in. And I thought, oh, I wonder what's, whether that's.
Yeah, I thought that changed.
Yeah, okay. No, that's still my kind of hope for Zaca.
Okay.
The only new people in, I'm sorry, the only new people in the village are the ones in that house diagonal from my office, the, the old Wincheck House. But they are not really impacted by the road closure because it closes right on the corner.
Okay.
Yep.
So Patty, real quick. Saturday, we were talking six to 10:00 or seven to 10:00, just so I'm sure my notes.
Well, Edie says that I wrote seven, seven to 10:00, she's, is what she said that I wrote in my letter. I, I believe that would be just fine as breakfast starts at seven. I'm comfortable with that.
Oh, seven, set a six?
Yeah.
To 10:00 PM. Okay, 10:00 or 11:00?
10.
11:00.
Oh, no.
Well, the band will stop by nine. They're playing six to nine, so then that leaves us an hour to get everyone out safely.
Okay.
I think that should work.
Yeah.
Check them out.
That, yeah. And then on Friday, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM closure.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, okay, yeah, four.
All right, and then Sunday, what did I have for a start time, Edie? Was it 11:00?
Uh, for Sunday, you said you could be flexible with the time. Optimal will be to close the road in the morning through approximately 3:00 PM. We could be flexible and not close the road in the morning until approximately 11:00 AM. 3:00 PM. And again, I'm just, I'm just looking at this like for convenience of the people who live there. Like if we can keep it tight enough that they can, you know, still get out in the morning or whatever they might want to do. So, um, so 11:00 to 3:00 then for Sunday?
Yes, please.
Okay, who's gonna make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the road closure for the Old Home Day events. From Friday, Friday, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Between, on Branch Road, between?
Yes, between, on Branch Road, between the bottom of, or by the school, the intersection at the school to the intersection at Brook Road.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been motioned and seconded to close the road for Old Home Day. This is also, we should note, going to be, it's, it's Friday, September 19th, Saturday, September 20th, and Sunday, September 20th, 21st, September 21st on the Sunday. So 19, 20, and 21. Any other discussion? Well, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Can I hear you, Rhonda?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, so that's that one. Thank you Patty. Please do get the letters out to folks and make sure that the fire department in particular knows because it does impact their services. And, you know, they need to come back and yell at us because we didn't tell them in advance. Well, they can try that. We can rejigger if we need to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion of the highway wage increases for this fiscal year. And I sent, I sent to the board some kind of background information, especially for those who are newer to the board. And I sent through a worksheet that we can use to do some planning. But I wanted to start with some of the bullet points on this discussion that, piece that I put, which is unfortunately, we still don't know how insurance is gonna play out. And it is a huge stress for our staff when they don't understand what that's gonna look like. And we don't understand what it's gonna look like at this point. And until we have numbers from the state, you know, in this process, I, I just don't think we can surmise what that's gonna look like. My, my hope is by giving these wage increases now, as soon as we can, and with being within our budget, but getting those out, that'll at least give people an opportunity to start to, you know, save a little bit if they need to save a little bit. But, but I don't know any other way to, to handle that. I simply don't know and I don't want to delay the wage increase because I don't know something.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Oh, this is a pretty good thing you're doing here. Can I make a motion that we accept the 3.3 or 3.3 raise for the guys?
Um, I don't think.
We need to talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I wanna, I wanna.
Just I have, because I have a couple of.
Okay, small, quick comments. All right. Yeah, okay. I also, I also wanted to note that we do have, and we have had some concerns about internal parity between the staff. Some of them who've been on, have been out on the crew for longer, you know, the understanding that tenure and, you know, how long have you been somewhere and how long have you been in the workforce are also things that we know are, should have some impact on our wage structure because we don't have sort of a set, here it is, you know, for a job. So we need to address that if we can today. I, I have to say, my perspective is that the percent increases, if we do it by a percentage as opposed to do it to a dollar amount, that tends to favor those who are already making more. They're getting a bigger increase. They already have more. And the people who are in that space right now, uh, by, by the looks of some statistics that we have, that appear, they appear to be a little bit more above state averages. But if you look at this locally, it's not the same. But I just want to say that from my perspective, percent increases don't handle internal parity concerns and they don't, they, they don't necessarily always promote fairness in the same way. I want to note that we do have a new hire that has only been on staff for six months and he's performing well. However, historically, we have not given increases until the end of the first year. I want to note that I, the numbers that I have and that I work with were all from the 24 compensation material.
Is that this new book here?
The 20, yeah, okay, yeah. And I, and I have that, we have that electronically because, because Patty puts in our data, we get this electronically and I played with it a lot more electronically than with the, with the print book, uh, because I could select towns that I knew. But I will say that in reading, in randomly reading other towns nearby, I happened to notice that Marlboro gave a $2 an hour increase to all of their employees. I also note that they are, that they were on the bottom of the list of, of wages. So, but that was their, that was how they approached it this year. The other towns, I have no idea what they've done, if anything, yet. So when we are compared to the statewide averages from the 2024 VLCT Compensation and Benefits Report, on average, we track okay to somehow a little bit high at face value, except again, on this internal parity versus years of experience. So, um, we can see that there's a statewide average for those who have submitted their data to the VLCT for foreman and supervisor. The average is $33.26. For, for the supervisor, it's $32.25. On, on, on a median level, which is the midpoint, both of them, they're same at $32.23. These are, these are numbers. They can inform us, but you know, that's, and that's helpful. Um, the mechanic wages for, for the fiscal, or for the 2024 Compensation Report was an average of $30.90 per hour and the mechanic median was $30.09 an hour. And then there were, there were a couple of different job titles. There's full-time crew. And there's equipment operator. So these two, I'm kind of bracketing together as well. The average for a full-time crew member is $25.50, $26.55. And the median is $26.30 an hour. And then for the equipment operator, it was $25.61 and the median was $25.20. So keeping those brackets in mind, I did put together a proposal that we can talk through now. For the sake of argument, I will share this on the Zoom, just so people can see what we have here. And I'm gonna share this. What seems to share.
Let's have.
I'm gonna see this.
Oh.
And I, again, I think everybody got, on the board got copies of this in advance. So.
Yeah, they did.
Okay, so, so what I did is just again, to try to get some better guideposts or sense that we're treating our employees fairly is I looked at specific towns in the, in our region. Stanford, you might say, isn't in our region, but again, it was based on who put data in. And so looking at the, looking at the towns here for the highway supervisor or sometimes called highway director or highway superintendent or highway foreperson, with all of the other towns that submitted their data and just doing a strict average of it, which is not particularly accurate, but it's the best that I could do quickly. Um, the average of all of those folks was $36.80 an hour. Yeah, that's last year's VLCT. And it just kind of gives us again, some markers. And today, our highway supervisors, 3640. For the role of mechanic, which we do have one employee who is particularly skilled and who does that as a reasonably high percentage of his job, uh, we have an average, and there were a lot fewer people who had mechanics on staff. But the average of all of those that are listed up there, Brattleboro, Vernon, Wilmington, $31.19. And that person today is making $31.20. And then there's a much longer list of people. And again, when I say equipment operator times three, Brattleboro clearly does have three tiers and everybody in that tier is getting the same $22.23 and $12.00 an hour or $22.23 an hour or $30.42 an hour. So they, they have a much more structured perspective. And a bigger crew, obviously. We've got some numbers from Putney. We've got numbers from Vernon. We've got lighting him, equipment operators. And, you know, Guilford Town, Halifax is listed here as well, but you know, we had some of our lower-paid employees were the ones where we had some turnover. Marlboro is listed here again, lower than others. Wilmington, again, looks like they do a lot of everybody in the same boat is making $30.23 an hour in Wilmington. So all of those, the average of all of those for crew was $25.96. Just doing a straight-up, pull it down and call it close, closer than the state level maybe. But our crew average is $26.26 per hour. So I feel like we're not super far off of the mark. That's kind of what I'm thinking of that. So with that information, I decided I'd go ahead and make a proposal. And the proposal that I have starts by looking at some numbers here, which say our budget But when we look at what people are making today and we do 40 hours times 52 hours, 52 weeks times the, times the salary that we pay out, our actual annual base amount is $304,491.20. Um, and so if we take that budget and we take away the annual base, then what the money we have to work with is $10,224.80, right? So if we just did an average, which again, would not deal with these internal parity questions, that instead of the 2.5% cost of living adjustment we thought we would make, uh, it, or that we budgeted for, we didn't say we would make that, but we're like, let's, let's go with this as a percent increase on the budget, so the same as the wages. Um, the reason for the differential there is because we didn't hire in at the highest rate, which is the guestimate we put into the spreadsheet. So if we were working with that, then I believe we would be looking to try to up the hourly dollar amounts across all employees. We would have $4.92 per hour to work with. Um, this is the part that is new and I, and I don't know if I'm doing it in the best fashion, but we're eight weeks into the fiscal year and we don't usually say this is retroactive. So my question to the people who are better with numbers than me, you know, do we have this extra 1539 in the budget to add to this? Or am I making, am I double counting something?
Um, could I parse that into two things?
Yes, you could. I'm sure you can.
First.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for doing all of that and doing all the backgrounds. Lori and I had a chance yesterday because Lori hadn't been through, you know, this process. And so we walked through your, this spreadsheet that you did and then mine is pretty much like yours and I have a couple of other little tweaks. So we went, kind of went through both of those. And then I spent a bunch of time kind of at the crack of dawn today going through some stuff. So I have, I came up with a similar conclusion that you did. I came at it a slightly different way, but it might have different impacts.
Okay.
Because I was worried that some of the numbers that you had as an increase was not equivalent to, was under COLA. And we can, we can go through that.
That's, yeah, yeah. That is absolutely true. So what I was doing was suggesting that, that those, those positions were at a closer parity or even a little above the average and that I was, I was definitely saying, like, I only have this much to work with. Here's.
How do we, yeah, how do we?
Yeah.
How do we, how do we mix it up? Um, so what I did, and I don't, I suppose what I could do is print this because it gets complicated if we share screens. I have essentially the same thing. I used different numbers, had two columns. One is current sal, current hours.
Wage.
Wage hours.
Okay.
COLA, 2.5%, that's a number.
Okay.
Then we still had money to work with in the budget.
Okay.
So then that money, I then went through and tried to rationalize.
Okay.
Bringing some people up, you know, to where they probably, you know, would be better reflected. So yes, that's right. So I'm happy to go through that.
Yeah. And, and if you would rather share it or I can, I can change these numbers. This was again, it was my attempt.
Yeah, we should come up to, to this, to this, to the same thing. What I can, it's probably easier and less confusing. The num, you came, the numbers that I came up with, you, you had a total of $4.81 of increase.
Which was a little below that 4.92.
Mine, I came up with $4.80. So we were, we're, we're in the same, in the same ballpark.
Yep.
So, uh, where, how do I, how do I?
Do we want to just put again, numbers in if your numbers are different? I mean.
Yeah, I can give, I'm just trying to, looking at yours, I just want to give you the corresponding number.
To that number that's bracketed now?
Right, to what, to what she has. So that number is, was that a doll, that was a dollar amount? That was an N dollar amount, right?
Yep, I just, I just did.
Okay, so I had, which was COLA plus an adjustment.
Okay.
I had 3740.
Okay.
The next one, you.
Hang on, I think that's decided that it wants to be a percentage, but I'll fix that.
Okay.
And, and I, and I had played with variations of all these numbers, obviously. It's not like I'm.
Sure.
It's just like, we gotta do this as a board. So, you know, since me spending all my time coming up with something that seems.
You still, you still got percentages.
I do. But hang on, I gotta, I gotta.
Well, you know what you can do? Could, could you just overwrite your number for now? Because then you can see the impact, because I've got your numbers here. So why don't we just keep? So I had 3740.
Okay.
The next one, you had.
3220.
You had, hold on, let me just make sure because I moved, you had, it started out at 3120. I had 3225.
3225, okay.
The next one. No, no. You started this.
Okay.
The next one's 25, so you had, and I had for that one, 2650.
Okay.
The next one started at 2704 and I had 2829.
Okay.
And then the 2675, we had no change.
Yeah.
So I ended up with a total increase, an aggregate increase of 15119 that on average was $30.24. It resulted in a total annual with proposed increase. I had 314,475, so I was off $240.80 from budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have no raise for the new hire at all? But you said within a year, you're gonna get a raise. You're still gonna be in.
Yeah, correct, correct. So in some regards, like we are looking at this $4.80 and then the $4.92 that would still keep us in the budget, that might be considered 12 cents reserve times whatever the extra time is. So it's, we're not, yeah, and I.
Because if we can give him, I think he's doing great. And if we can.
Yeah.
Give him something, I think.
Especially when we have this next conversation about this other, this other, you know, sizable impact on folks. So, yeah.
We did say though, that one year, you know, was what we were gonna do on that. I mean, because he specifically asked.
A year, you're still gonna be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
One year of his hire.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're going to talk in six, one, six more.
Because he started in March.
It's been about five and a half months, yeah.
Yeah, I, I put, I put a little note saying, and reevaluate in December, right? So. So I was kind of rejiggering numbers too and came up with almost exactly.
Did you?
What you had.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, you know, again, we're trying to be transparent. We're trying to. You know, again, we're trying to be transparent, we're trying to work as a board, come up with numbers that we think. Are our best effort to. Spend the money the, the taxpayer said we, we could spend and. Get our employees to a new level of wages that reflects the service they're providing to us. So if, if that, if everybody's cool with that, we can make the motion to update these, these amounts. And.
Can I, can I just ask real quick, just because we're changing yours. So let me just look at this. I just want to make sure that, having done that, so you ended up with. It's three fourteen, four ninety-six. I, we had, I had three fourteen.
Four seventy-five.
Four seventy-five.
Yeah, and my, my. Okay. Updated to the, to that same thing, Karen.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just.
Yep.
Want to make sure because.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I had basically. I, you know, the, the cost of living increase was two and a half percent. I looked at what we had budgeted. And the key thing in my mind was I want to stay within the budget. And I saw your proposal and. You know, Karen's proposal is very similar. And it actually figures out to. An average of three point two four eight percent is what it is. So it's point seven percent over the cost of. Over the cola. So. I'm not going to argue with that.
Okay.
So I, I actually. Well, out of the two. I think. Karen's proposal is. A little more.
Yeah, I, I definitely, I, it's, this is like such an, such an awkward, awkward thing to do in public. And yeah, here we are and we must do it this way. And. From my own perspective. It's easier to add than to, than to make a proposal and then try to take money away. So I am very happy with the final numbers here. They are. They are in line with my expectations as well. All right, do we have a motion then?
Um, I'll move.
Last year, we did just put names and numbers. I mean, I think, again, this is public information, we're doing it in the public. So. It's, it's probably most. It's probably clearest. And then the other thing, Patty. Tell, tell us when we make this effective, but is it a Sunday? Is it a Monday? Can you do it next week? And thank you for staying on.
I mean, I would assume it would be the next pay period, right?
I would, yeah, I hope.
You're still muted, Patty. Okay. There you are. There I am. Yeah, so Sunday, Sunday, the twenty-fourth. You could, you could do it for that day. Okay.
Sunday, August twenty-fourth?
Yeah. Yep. And the reason to, to, you know, to explicitly state it is if there was some overtime that was needed, you know, that we want to say the.
Okay, yeah.
The start of the work week.
So.
So that would be wages earned, starting the week of the twenty-fourth. Which. They won't see their first paycheck with the new wages until September fourth. Just so everybody understands that.
Okay, which is just two weeks later.
Yep. But it'll start, it'll start being applied Sunday, the twenty-fourth.
Right, but the, the first, the first paycheck will be a full payment cycle.
Yep, full payment.
Okay. Um, so then. I want to make sure I word this properly. Can I move to? Approve or to, to authorize? Well, how do we, how, what is the, what is the wording? Or do we just?
Move to increase the.
Just move, move to increase the wages for the highway team.
I think we need to somehow have either a copy of this in.
Yeah, I just, I think we just say person name, last name, the last name and.
But, but do you want the increase or do you want the ending result?
I want, I want the final dollar.
The final dollar amount, okay. So move, I would say I will move to. Increase. The highway department wages. Beginning on Sunday, August twenty-fourth. For. Mike. Fournier. Thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. Heath Stone. Thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, Finn. Ben, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Wade. Twenty-six fifty. And Travis, who is less than a year, still. Staying for now at twenty-six seventy-five with a recognition that his, his salary we reviewed in December.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Um, any other discussion? I just, I'd like to ask a, like, a procedural question. In the past, we've just done this at this meeting and then Patty makes the magic work. Do we want to write a note to each person and just say?
I think it'd be better, not to interrupt you. I think it'd be nicer for one of the road commissioners, left board member, someone to come down and sit down all these employees and say.
That's what I was thinking, some other, like some to actually say, this is, this is, you know, we had this meeting. So I don't know if somebody is able to. Want to do that?
I mean, that should be me because I am the road, I am the, what's the word? Yes.
Yeah.
Um, my issue is I cannot do it this week. I have like a crazy rest of the week.
Right, well, if you.
I could try, but.
Yeah, if you can. If you can do it like early next week, I mean, it will start, you know, it will be, you know, it started, started yesterday, but we're started whatever. Um, since it won't be in their paycheck until the following week, that's. And then, um, again, this, this is public information, you know, feel free to say these are the, this is how we go about this process. Patty, you raised your hand again? Yes, will someone please leave me a copy of that spreadsheet?
Yes.
Or email it to me or something?
I will.
Thank you. All right. So, I'd like to, I'd like to ask for the vote, um, all those in favor of increasing the highway department wages beginning Sunday, August twenty-fourth. To the amount of seventy, thirty-seven dollars and forty cents for Mike Fournier, thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents for. Keith Stone, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour for Ben Barnett and twenty-six fifty for Wade. Janofsky, I was coming up with an really old high school person's last name that also began with J. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. I did, yeah. All right, so that is the wages increase discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Z, PCZBA secretary hourly rate. We, we've had this ongoing problem where we don't have. We don't have that position on our list of appointed. Uh, list of appointments that it, that goes in the book. And then every year I say I gotta add it and then I forget to add it. And so we should have formally reappointed Tina in the spring. We did not do that. That also is the trigger for me to say, hey, there's somebody who's getting some money from town. Let's. Talk to them about how it's going and whether there's anything we can do differently. Um, and so we never, we, we never adjusted it. Last year, we didn't adjust it. This year, we didn't actually have that conversation with Tina. Um, but the current hourly wages for that have been sixteen dollars an hour. Um, at the moment, uh, we are. You know, we're paying listers twenty-five dollars an hour, we are paying our administrative assistant twenty dollars an hour. We had a range. For when we were hiring to our assistant, but I don't remember what that is. Um, but this is a very, very part-time job. I averaged it out, it looks like it had been about five and a half hours per month. For the person in the position and, um, and I just think. You can earn that much money if you are working at a fast food restaurant and we don't have fries to offer. As an incentive, right? This is, this is a, a very part-time thing. I have reached out to, um, I got four noes, I got one maybe that I'm going to talk to tomorrow and I've got. A handful of other people that I can reach out to, but just haven't had time to, to suggest it. And I, I'd like to be able to, when I'm talking to people, say this is, this is the, the pay range we are willing to pay for that. Uh, last year, we did not go over budget on that. Uh, we have fifteen hundred dollar budget for the year. So I think we have room to maneuver with it and. And make it something that makes it worth somebody's while. The other challenge that I can foresee with that position, just as an FYI, and I'm thinking of backup plans is. We don't have another laptop to offer them. So it's like they have to have their own equipment even. But one thing I was thinking was, we do have this machine. Which is not great. It's got a tiny little keyboard and whatever, whatever. But if somebody needed to use a, a computer that is town equipment. Maybe they could come in here and do their.
Sorry, which computer?
The minimap on the wall.
Really?
Yeah, I mean.
I guess it is a computer, sure.
It, it is a computer. I don't know what kind, like, I don't know, I don't know. It's a Macintosh. I don't know how you get like software on it. Yes, like.
You do have the, I mean, if they're just typing stuff, you have that old down. Computer still on highway too.
Okay, we'd have to probably refurbish it, take a look at it, but thank you.
But it's still there sitting on the bed.
Okay, so thank you. That's another.
Yeah, and it's already got a certain level of software on it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, depending on what.
Yeah, so anyway, um, so. I don't, I, to me, it feels like a, a better hourly rate for a position like this is.
Would help.
Yep. I would say. To me, twenty dollars an hour is kind of like a, a floor, I would guess. And depending on that person's. Uh, whoever fills it, I know if they, if they've got, if they've been doing the same thing, right, for. Several years, that's, then they'll probably not what they're going to be interested in, so.
Quick math, if you do, you said five and a half hours a month average. Twenty-two hours, a twenty-two dollars an hour is what we could do. To make it come to fifteen hundred.
All right, so.
If you did twenty, you're on the budget.
Yeah, if we do twenty to twenty-two as a range for hiring somebody in. Yeah? Okay, I was, yeah, thinking twenty-two fifty, but twenty-two, yeah.
And I mean, and yeah, twenty comes to. One twenty-five, so.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's very much based on how many hearings do they have, how much, you know, like, it's, it's based on how much work they have done. And it feels like it's. Calmed down a little bit over there, but. So, okay, thank you. I'll, let's move on from that. I'll just go with that. We don't have to have a motion because we're not actually hiring yet. We're just kind of getting a. Position description together. All right, next up is Committee for Animal Control Timeline and Survey Expenditures. And I put my name down here, but Sue is also here. I just wanted to share with, um, people that. You know, this process of doing. Ordinances has a sequence of events that have to happen. And, um. So. The challenge with it, and I explained this to the, to the committee when they had their first meeting, um, is. If. If five percent of the voters after the, after the select board has agreed. To adopt the ordinance. Five percent of the voters can come back and say, I want us to take a vote on this to disallow it. So they can, they can say no to it. They can't force us to put one in, but they can say, no, we don't. We don't, we want to vote to see whether this ordinance should go into effect. So with that, there's a, a series of events that have to happen. Um, I. Tried to muscle it out because the town, you know, the, the town meeting day, and then you work backwards and you kind of go through this whole, this whole thing. Um, and the, the spreadsheet that I brought up was not for what I just was talking about. So no wonder I was confused. Kind of fake my way through that one. All of that to say that we have given them a pretty tight timeline to work with, but I think we needed to have this back to a soup. Can you remind me? Because you did another worksheet of it.
Sure, so, um. Got you. So the select board would receive the first draft of the ordinance and vote to obtain legal advice, um, October seventh. I don't know if that's an actual meeting date for you. I didn't check that, but it's sort of, I was working the timeline of when you would need it. And then that would be allowing you four weeks to get back the legal advice. I don't know that it would take that long, but I thought a big window of time would be good. And with that legal advice, you might wind up bouncing it back to the committee asking for some changes, or you might take the changes yourself.
Yeah.
And having the revised ordinance reviewed by the select board November eighteenth. Adopting it on December second. Which gives you a deadline for publication and posting of the adopted ordinance to December sixteenth. Deadline for any petition opposing the ordinance would be January fifteenth. That's in time to go into the town warning published around January twenty-second, town meeting Thursday.
Perfect. So, and part of the reason I wanted to walk through that is just that, that, that actually is a timeline we should kind of keep in mind. If we did decide that there are other, another ordinance we want to push hard on. Now, I know that we've talked about the highway ordinance. I know that we feel like that's, it's a big lift in a way. But by having this committee taking that on, if there was someone on the board, and it doesn't have to be Karen, who wanted to try to push through that. We could follow these same dead, deadlines as Ken. Do we think we could have something prepared by the, for the seventh? And adopt them on the same, you know, on the same sequence, that would give people, again, the chance to, without forcing us to do a special meeting and spend extra money. To have their, you know, their opportunity to say, we don't like this. I think the highway ordinance in my perspective. Is gonna be. Not so controversial as maybe, because first of all, we already have one, right? We would be updating what we have. And hopefully it wouldn't be, it wouldn't garner, um. You know, I think it's, so much of it ends up being kind of common sense. And if there's not. Serious, you know, changes to how we do hi- highway stuff, you know, a lot of the stuff we've kind of built into some of our forms, right? So, anyway, just a, just a thought, and we don't have to go any further with that, but I wanted, I wanted to bring it up so that we would say there's enough. That might be something to consider maybe at the next meeting if we want to.
Yeah, I can, from, from my perspective, and I, I think the, the timeline too that you described is, is terrific. I know if I just sort of stopped doing everything, like didn't work on budget, didn't work on anything, I would have a hard time meeting those timelines, I think.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm taking documents from other towns and filling in what we already have. So it's a.
Yeah.
It's a, it's more of an initial editing process and then, you know, then there's a committee, but there's a, there's a, there's a bill and it's, it is. Maybe I'm just, maybe I'm just. Getting weak in my old age.
No, no, no.
I just, I just don't think I could, I don't think I could, could do that justice and.
Yeah.
We're gonna really be focusing on budget.
Yeah, okay, that's fair enough. All right, so with that, then that is, that is, the committee has already met twice now, um, including just before this meeting and, um. They actually have a request of us and, and that is to, um, fund a survey. Um, so I will turn it over to Sue with that request to.
Sure, thank you. So. If we draft an ordinance, we would like to make it as close as possible to what most townspeople might find useful. And to that end, we've designed a very simple three-question yes/no survey. Um, that we can post on Survey Monkey. And we would like to send out postcards to everyone in town, giving them the link to the survey and inviting them to fill it out. And giving them a deadline that allows us then to stay in our timeline. We would need to purchase postcards, which Patty said she would be willing to print in the town office and pay for postage. I think that we can get everything we need out of the free version of Survey Monkey, so, um, that. Means our only real cost is buying the blank postcards and buying the postage. We can probably do about six hundred postcards and reach everyone once we've knocked off duplicates, because a total. Towns is closer to six fifty, but for instance, we can hand a postcard to people that we, for ourselves and to people that we know. And some of them are duplicates. So Patty's estimate is we could bring that down to six hundred. Postage for six hundred postcards would be three hundred and sixty-six dollars. I thought we could get six hundred blank postcards for just under fifty dollars, but then found out that that's only the ink. Found out that that's only the inkjet postcards, and that's only from a distributor who might or might not get them to us in timely manner. Um, postcards for laser jet are more expensive. Patty had specified that she would really like to have. Avery postcards exclusively, but if we can get Uline postcards, and I will check with Patty whether that would be acceptable. They're a fraction of the cost. They appear to me to be identical. Um, so the issue is with the jammed up printer.
Yeah.
Um, so I'd need to run that by Patty, but it does make it hard for me to see exactly what dollar amount I'm asking for, for the blank postcards.
Can you give us a not to exceed amount?
Sorry?
Can you give us a not to, we can do a not.
Not to exceed, yeah. Okay, well. If it turns out that we do have to use Avery. Um. They are probably going to cost us a, for a box of two hundred, it's probably going to be about twenty dollars. And we would have to buy three of them, so sixty dollars. But I, I, again, I can't be sure that that'll be what we would get, and I have to dig a little deeper on. We're finding them from a reliable source, or we're also going to price them out. Someone is, on our committee is going to go into Staples tomorrow and see what prices. They can offer for, uh, for Avery specifically. And again, I'll run it by Patty, whether we could get Uline instead. Um, I mean, Uline does a massive amount of paper products. I, I would expect they're probably fine. Um, so I don't know whether you.
Five hundred?
What you want to put for an upper limit?
What, do you think five hundred?
So, three, three sixty-six and sixty is four twenty-six, and then tax is probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be any tax.
Oh, okay.
We should be able to get free shipping if they ship.
Four fifty even.
Does anybody out there have any ideas? Stephanie's look like wheels are turning.
It's always something I've used, but I'm looking, you know, Matt Postcards, there's two hundred and fifty, and it starts. Or it says from thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, but that doesn't include postage, and so it's a little more expensive to get it. Through them, but.
It's tricky, because if you look around, the prices are just all running up on this product. It's kind of crazy. Um, but again, I didn't want to order from the cheapest source because I thought, I've never heard of this company.
Hmm.
Who knows how long it will take to come? We do have this time pressure. Um, so, but yes, if you were to say up to five hundred dollars, I'm sure we can work within that.
So, I will say, you know, been an advocate, like, this is a quality of life issue in town, and. To spend five hundred dollars to make sure that the process that we're using is in getting everybody's perspective.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Committee for Animal Control to spend, uh, up to five hundred dollars. For postcards and their survey, um, awareness mailing.
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Nancy.
Sue.
First meeting we talked about, I forgot what was decided about people that don't have computers and.
Oh, yes, on the postcard it would also say, it would, on the postcard it would say what link would be to do the Survey Monkey. And offer as an alternative, that they could come down to the town office and fill out a paper, sure then. Because not everyone would want or be able to do it online.
Yeah.
Make as, as accessible to everyone as possible again.
Yeah. Great, okay. Alright, with that, I'm gonna call the question. Uh, all those in favor of, uh, allowing the Committee for Animal Control to spend up to five hundred dollars. For postcards and postage for a survey awareness mailing, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next under new business, I have this additional grant.
Oh, additional grant, yes.
You don't get a break in between.
Talking with my friend. What? Sorry about that. Um, okay, so. The new grant, um, evidently this came out, um, at the end of July, um, and. There was an incomplete distribution, so I just got it today. This is, uh, but, this is, um, a Better Roads Grant. It is a twenty thousand dollar award. Our match will be five thousand. Um, it, the. Work needs to be completed. Yep, next June, and this is Pike Road. Um, it is the stone line ditching for Pike.
Did you, what was the name of the grant or the title?
It's a Better Roads, Better Backroads. And it's something that, that we, the special condition for this grant are per legislation passed in twenty seventeen. Grant recipients with anticipated construction durations, you know, shall post the clean water sign and all that stuff. So it's part of the clean water, uh, requirement.
When, what was the date again that it would start or he?
Um, it can start. Yeah, they can start, award start date July one, twenty twenty-five, award end date September thirty, twenty twenty-six, and so the work will get done.
And.
Before then.
Is my understanding accurate that with these roads, that, that match amount can be labor costs and. And material costs?
Believe so. I don't know if Patty's still on here.
Labor, material.
Machines.
Okay.
It's sort of everything, and we just, Mike, we just got the new FEMA. Equipment rates, and I sent that to Patty. I may have sent it to her before, but I did send it to her today. Because we need to do that for Deer Park.
Yeah, there's the Better Backroads.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, we'll talk about that in a, in a half a second.
I'm sorry, Mike, when did you say the complete date would be by?
I thought it was June thirtieth.
This, this says, this says award, award end date September thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, they talked about that, that M R D P ending at the same time, so the M R D P. Mississippi Road Grant Program. Which is the one we're doing now, Buckland Hill, that's going to be completed by September thirtieth, so they mustn't move from both to the same completion.
And we have the capacity to, to take this on, presumably, correct?
A lot better than the capacity when we first started.
Mm-hmm.
Doing eleven segments at once, that was gross.
Yeah, how many segments does this cover?
Well, maybe, three or four.
Okay, what is a segment considered, what's?
Three hundred and twenty-five, seven, something.
So, I'd, I'd like to move that the board authorized me to sign the, the Better Roads Grant Agreement. Number one, three, three, five, for ditching on Pike Road.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
So what is the ditching involved? Is it just like lining with, with stone, or what is the actual procedure there? Just for curiosity's sake.
Well, it's all place dependent. Obviously, you can go up at Deer Park and see what we did there, go up at Deer, uh, Buckland Hill and see what we're going there. But it's all end on lead. Power lines obviously are a big factor, but majority of the time it's cut trees, stump trees. Ground bottom ditches. Home line ditches, hydrose.
But you, you've said before, keeping in mind the stone walls, you wouldn't, you would stay in that.
If you will indulge me for a moment more, I'm gonna share my screen, um, to just. Uh, show you, um, show everybody, so that if you have these kinds of questions, you know this is on our website. So, you do that. Um. If we do get, this is the one where, you know, it looks kind of not so great at start, at start, right? It looks pretty scary, and the ditches are too deep, and those are the kinds of comments that we get. So I just want to make people aware that on the website. If I can get to the website, where is it? That's not the one.
Is that our new website?
No, this is, no, I'm gonna do it for the old one, because I don't have the other one open. Um. And I still am, sorry, I'm fumbling because of the bar at the top of this screen. Alright, let me just go to a new page and go to Halifax V T. So if we get questions from the public, and so this might be explicitly for, um, you Lori is. On our website, on the Highway Department page, if it ever decides to open up. Um. Scrolling down. Past our schedules of activity, there's a section called ditch work notes. And it says, you know, look, it's, and now this is what we're doing. Here's a brochure about it. Here are some past meetings where we've already had this conversation. So forgive us if we kind of roll our eyes when you come in again and tell us like, this is scary. Um, but, uh, but this, uh, brochure that's on, yeah, um. Top, you know, kind of shows what it looks like, and gives people an understanding of what they're trying to do for the water. And this one looks like it's MR, MRGP, but it's, you know, essentially the same. Thing is, we want to make sure that our, our roads are draining properly and not draining into streams, so. I just wanted people to know that's there.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Uh, so.
Well, as you know, Pike Road is, well, the materials worn out between months' season, and you, you know what I'm saying. So, if you're digging the ditches out at its present current, um, status, where the road is at now. Will you be adding material on top to build the crown back up?
If they're all.
Because.
Part of the stuff they cover if it needs to.
Okay. So, so. I guess I'm trying to figure out if when it's low, it's kind of concave right now, um, in some parts. Um, if you dig the ditches before you put the material on. It seems like they're going to be that much deeper than, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? And then you.
I know what you're saying, but that's the easiest.
How that works. Say what?
That's the easiest way to do it. Otherwise, you, you put the gravel down, and then you dig your ditches, you're gonna.
You're gonna lose gravel. But, but I guess you take that into account when you, you know, do the whole project.
I'm trying to find, Jeff Nugent sent me an email, I can't find it right off the top of my head, but he sent me. Pre-construction and post-construction pictures side by side. Did you see that?
Yes. Well, for, for, for Deer Park, yes, and I shared that with the board, I thought.
I don't know if I saw the picture, but I saw the email.
That would be a good example of what.
Pictures, you see what I have. Because the pictures were, it, the, yeah, the.
That's like full extreme.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's cut back to what it needs to be cut back, the, the, the banks are all sloped, it, they come out beautiful, but. People don't like it, but.
Yeah.
State mandates it, what do you do?
But I'm sure we'll talk about it before, anyway.
Do you have a?
No, I mean.
Approximate date of my.
If not, you know, I'm just gonna flirt it right now.
Yeah.
Bigger trees that we're gonna have to work around here or there.
Okay.
Um, Mike, I have the, uh. The pictures, and I'm gonna send them to the board now.
Is that what was in the distribution packet? Or? Maybe that wasn't included.
You know, that's a really, that's a really good question, and I think I didn't include it in the packet. That was my error. Let me get you, I'm, I just put you on here, Emily, so it's. Coming your way, everybody.
In the, uh, distribution packet, it looks like it was just about the email thread. But not the pictures.
Right, so the email came after. Yeah, looks like.
Yeah, that was a lot, a lot of work.
Yeah, you got, can you guys?
We'll hit the email.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, well, I just forwarded to you just this moment, so you should have, it would pop right up.
If I didn't have so much email, it will come in faster, but it's, yeah, synced my entire two email workouts there.
I mean, I mean, that looks, that looks good with the riprap and the ditches and. Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm thinking I'll try to display it up there.
I didn't do it, so.
This was the first time I've been.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So that's Deer Park and Josh Road.
Okay.
Alright. Non-stabilized ditch and then the new ditch.
Of course, it helps, it helps that the after picture is a nice bright sunny day.
Yes.
The other one has snow in the.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Okay.
Kind of before and after.
Yep.
And look at the colors.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's a beautiful thing. Yes, so these are, these are each of the segments, right, so that.
Yep.
It looks good, Mike.
They had Deer Park and Josh, and now, let's see how, look how that comes across here. He knows anything.
Yeah.
People probably have that fear of going over the edge, you know, when the, when the trees are cut, it's just a natural feeling.
Yep.
That's what people will stop you and say, are they supposed to be that deep?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so, so there's twelve, there's twelve pages of.
Okay, it's, mine is really slow coming through, and since I'm the only one who can, um, display it, we might circle back to that later in the meeting. If there's time, but my email is, just takes a long time to send, because I've got too much stuff, and I haven't had time to file it, so.
Yeah, so these, these pictures will be used, um, uh, Patty will be able to use these pictures in getting our reimbursement for the grant.
Yeah.
And doing all that work, um.
I have a great idea. Let's put them on the new updated website.
Gonna say that could be, that could be handy too.
Then that, that'll make it easier for people to see it. Okay, cool. Alright, so we went ahead and did that.
And, but if I could just, since we're doing that, since we're on the same agenda, if I could just read very quickly what. Um, Jeff Nugent, who's the Wyndham Regional Commission Planner, he said, he sent the, the note to, uh. Uh, to, uh, Patrick Wilson at V Trans, and he said, hi, Patrick, thanks again to you and your V Trans staff for your help a year and a half ago. When Halifax was applying for a Better Roads Grant to work on Deer Park. I was out there this morning taking post-construction photographs. And decided to do a before and after comparison. Thought you'd like to see the improvements in the road. Hope you're having a great summer. Patrick came back and said, everything looks great, folks. Glad we could be of assistance, and that stonework is amazing. John and Will were commenting how need of a job was done, so kudos to Mike and his crew on the execution of the work. Hope everyone has a great week and doesn't melt in the heat and humidity. So, kudos, Mike, to you and the guys. I finally got it. Awesome.
Yeah, mine's coming, I probably hit send. Um, awesome, yeah, let's, let's, and let's put that stuff up on the Highway Department page, you know, that's, that's the kind of stuff people need to hear. It's not just us saying, you know.
Yeah, and it's nice to see the before and after, because it's.
Yeah.
They're quite dramatic. Emily, is that something you can do?
I think we can do it once we get the new website up.
Oh, so we have to wait for the new website?
Well, here's, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, we don't even spend time. That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We're over time.
Okay, we are over time on that one. Um, the Deer Park Better Backroads Grant Project wrap-up, we're moving into old business. And we did take a vote on that, did we? Yes.
Uh, I don't know if we finished.
What's the wrap-up?
We, we, we were second, uh, moved in second in.
Oh, yeah, we have to vote on authorization.
We actually moved, no, we did not.
We were still discussing.
Okay, oh, bye, bye.
Hey, Mike.
Uh, so do we need to still move in second?
We moved. I moved requesting authorization, you seconded, and then we chatted about work and stone walls, and you shared screens and.
Okay. Alright, so.
Story about the crown coming back up.
Alright, so the motion that I'm agreeing to is to have, um. Uh.
Authorize me to sign.
authorize Karen Christopherson to sign for another Better Backroads Grant.
Number, number one, three, three, five.
One, three, three, five.
Which is Pike Road Ditching.
Ditching, okay. So, if you're correct that you said it and I seconded, then we will go ahead to the vote, which is all those in favor to do the. Better Backroads Grant on Pike, number one, three, three, five, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries five zero. Okay, now we're into old business, and we're doing our Better Backroads Grant Project Wrap-Up.
I don't have it.
And this was in the packet? That prep?
Find it? Okay, where are we?
Uh, okay.
You're my mother.
Hmm, so this was. Oh, so what I.
What are we looking for?
Was there any comment on the?
I think she's just gonna tell us where we're at.
Deer Park Road, I think, I think you're just gonna give us a project wrap-up.
I just did. We looked at the pictures.
Okay, okay, that was, oh, okay.
We're done, we're done, yes.
Okay.
We're done.
Alright.
You're done.
Do we have more information on incoming credit card payments? Do we have more information on incoming credit card payments? So um. Patty Dowd has left the meeting at this point, so.
I talked to Patty yesterday and had asked her um. Sure, because yesterday was when Greg sent, I think it was yesterday. And he wanted to get that all in place before he worked on the. The pay, the credit card thing, module, whatever power that's gonna work. So she did send me the, the hammer, hamer, whatever that was. So I forwarded what information she had, she sent to me. I sent it to Greg. So he's, he was gonna try to, she sent it to me today. I sent it right to him and he was gonna try to do some research to see. What he, because he had never heard of that company. You know, I told her that Patty had said that they said there's no fee. Um so he was gonna check that out. So as far as uh the credit card thing, we're kind of waiting on, I think, uh any input that we have with the current link that I sent.
Okay.
And then when we get that all finalized. After his research and so on, he will um install the payment, the credit card um option.
When do you need the, I haven't had a chance to click on the link yet. When, when are you looking for, for, for feedback? What's the?
He didn't give me a date, but he, you know.
He did, he did give a date. The switch over. Which is next week.
Oh, next week, okay.
Those days. You couldn't do one day.
I can do, so, so the answer to him is we're not quite, we're not gonna be able to do that.
Maybe the week after.
Yeah, the weekend. And then the second, we have a meeting.
Labor Day already. September's right here.
Yeah.
So um.
So.
Is there, is there anything Lori on that website that would help testing if you've got multiple people? Only when I used to do.
On the new.
Yeah, is there any reason to have multiple people trying to do things at the same time or?
I don't think we need to stress test it.
There's no stress testing, okay.
Yeah, um one, one request that I did have on the website redesign. Is Emily and I really should have some time to get into the backend to see what it takes to do, to do the updates. Yeah, I have, I have a few concerns about it and, and recommendations. One is that the search bar is on the bottom of the screen. Um and I would prefer it to be at the top. I think that's more of a standard, a standard web design to have it at the top. Um and I, I, I have to admit, I'm one of the biggest users of our own website because I'm always searching for minutes. I did one quick search on it and, and found it, came back with what I was looking for fairly readily and it was not. And you know, a lot of times I'm looking for which meeting did we do this at? But it comes back with blocks of text. And this time I was looking for like the town report and the date of the town report and it came up. High in the search results as opposed to being buried in every single meeting minutes, going back, you know, for a decade.
So that was sort, that sort of worked the way you wanted it to.
So I like the, I like the results page for the search, but I would like to say, can we get the search bar higher on the screen? Um the other thing that I think um is um useful to think about is. Just, it threw me a little bit when he said. We are not gonna differentiate between pages and posts. So everything goes in the same, like you set it up and then everything is gonna come up on the top screen. So like if we've just published the minutes. The minutes show up. If we've published.
Well, that's not good.
If we've published the agenda, the agenda shows up. A little like.
You don't mean on the beginning when the, the, kind of the flash?
Yeah, yeah, because he did say everything.
Yeah, it should be subject matter specific.
Y- yeah, so he, and he wants, you know, he wants things to be categorized, like, you know, minutes, agendas, you know. But then he said, okay, well, what about Conservation Commission? And I'm like. So that's not a diametrically opposed thing, right? If we're gonna have Conservation Commission, we could have minutes and agenda for that, you know, like. We don't want to have twenty-five different split outs. So I'm a little bit concerned about. That it, it certainly would streamline it from a putting, a, a perspective of putting it up, but the other um.
But from a user pers, and I haven't been in it yet, but from a user perspective, if you go in and you want to say, I need to get a permit or I want to. Check something somewhere, um it, it would be much better to be able to. Click on whatever the major topic is and then you drill down. And you have a lot of similar things. So maybe you do have committee minutes and agendas, or you have notices or, you know.
What about if we, if we ask him to join us on that September second meeting and then? If you, if you wanna. It'll be easier to walk through with him. I can relay what you guys are telling me, but it always seems like. There's always a follow-up question that I anticipate.
Exactly. Well, no, I won't anticipate it either. I'll be the one asking for, like that's what he has been, tells me about.
September second?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll ask him.
And what this, what this means though is like, just so that you guys know in the background. Every time Emily and I are posting something new, we're actually tracking it in a spreadsheet right now. Because he took a, he took a snapshot of it last Monday or something. And he's very fast. I'm very impressed. We're gonna have this up in, in a month. Um but uh. I would, I would like to, um I, I'll try to get that up on the screen here just so people can see it. I think it's, I think it's got a, an interesting um. Uh motif and it's, you know, the. Menus on the top are not any different, but the um, I see if you're under L or under M. I will say that I think. People are gonna miss the boxes. You have to scroll to get the boxes now. So it's like the things are reversed. Before it was the boxes are on top and then the posts were below. Now it's like the posts are here and you have to scroll down to get to the boxes. You know, and, and again, if there's, if, if you were able to, to, you know, say that one of those dates next week will work for you, then I would say, oh, let's. Let's maybe consider, should we just do that as a special meeting because it's a special topic? Um all of that to say, um let's see if we can get them to meeting.
Yeah, and then it seems like he'll be able to button it up pretty quick after that once he'll have our input.
Yeah.
And it's been all this time, what's another?
Uh yeah, yeah.
You know, to make sure everybody has.
As long as we're not holding him up from uh continuing, but let's just take a quick look at this together. Uh since I can share.
And we're just looking at it with viewer rights, right? We're not, we're not going in looking at it. So it's just looking at, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so um, so the menu on the top hasn't changed. That the news, we've got businesses, which we probably ought to just delete or update. Um select board, you know, I don't think people go this way. I think that often they go to the boxes, or at least that's what I do.
Oh, I go right there. I go through the top.
So here's, so here's what's, here's what scrolling is this with the Halifax is hiring PCZBA. Then that, that Halifax birthday, the zero outage, this is scrolling. And that's everything that goes in, he claimed. Now then down here, if you scroll down, then you see the boxes like we're used to. Contacts, useful links, important announcements.
Yeah, I think I agree with you. Those should be up higher.
Yeah, but it's not, but. But would you still see, to see the, the scenery, this uh, these boxes come up first, you're saying, or the box? Do you know what I mean? I mean, I like that the. That we see the uh colored boxes with the first. So that we're flowing through that with announcements.
On my screen.
Them below, that below?
I don't have to, I have to, like, things like that is, I think is terrific, but it's.
That's not what you want to see first.
But, well, the thing is, it's. Um as things get posted. Are we, are we sort of, are we losing something? Because if somebody doesn't look at it that week, they're like, okay, my misquote.
Yeah, because, and that's true.
But so if somebody says, I want to see GMP Zero Outage Initiative, can they get there by going through?
So the, so the, yeah, so not on.
That's what I don't want to, that's what I don't want to lose.
Not on the boxes, but on the very bottom, if you go down here, this is where he wants us to have categories. So the, so. This is all in Halifax news and, you know, uncategorized. So there are these, there are these things on the bottom. I just feel like with my computer screen, when I came in and the only thing I saw was this huge wide banner. I was like, oh my God, where did the boxes go? Because that's how. I did, I panicked. And I was like, wait, if I just scrolled, but it depends on your screen size and everything too, right? And so um, you know, I don't know if this can be compressed.
I mean, I like, I like that concept and we could talk more with him, more like big messaging. Right, and, but it's big messaging. It's like kind of what's happening currently, but if it's just becomes a lot of stuff, then it gets.
And or like.
We just need to be.
There, there are some quieter times where we don't have a lot that we focus.
Right.
Right now, we've got a lot of construction going on. We've got openings, but there might be a period of a month or two months where nothing's new.
And it gets kind of stale.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I, it's, it's a nice, yeah, it's a nice, um it's, it's a very good first start to it. And um, yeah, so we'll try to talk more about that on the second and we'll try to get it on the agenda for that.
So only a minute over on that, that's pretty good.
All right, thank you.
Can I talk, we're at the end sort of, right? Can I just talk a little bit about Macmillan Road today and then we might have to put it on a future. Uh agenda. I forgot to, I should have mentioned it earlier.
You didn't mention earlier and I'm going with Pillen Road.
Yeah, we had a, we had a, we had an issue.
Okay, you guys asked for that to be on the next agenda, if I recall, so that's why I didn't.
I guess.
Well, maybe so. Next agenda's fine. That we, we, I think, right? Well, you, you were there today, so.
It needs consideration. You know, it's not just something, yep, we'll go back and fix that. Yep, we'll go back and fix the wall. There's a lot going on there. So I feel like um between Mike and I, we'll, I'll try to type up for the distribution package.
Let's, let's, let's do it. Let's do it that way. Because there were, there were a couple of things, or two, two things came up. To um Lori and I got emails directly, just as road commissioners. Um one on Macmillan Road and one on Jacksonville Stage Road. I think the support is missed. Yes, and that, that was pretty resolved. So one was resolved and one isn't. Um I wasn't able to join. The GMP and Lori and Mike at, at those today, so.
Yeah, so and I'll just make, I'll just make kind of one, one comment about, about that. Uh because there's, there was something that was sent earlier and um. I tend to just like, like try to, like I start jumping into problem solving mode right away, which is, you know, just how I operate. But then I had to step back and say like, okay, we have road commissioners and they're handling it. And like if, if you can bring it to us in a more complete state unless there's like an. An emergency that requires the whole board to know about it. Because then I'm putting my attention towards something that's not something I can do anything about until the next meeting anyway.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to deep read anyway.
Tim Appleby, the landowner. Um I told him we'd probably have to, it would have to go on the agenda and that we would. Try to remember to let him know when it is. He might even come in.
And then just as a, as a note with that one, um the first thought that popped into my head was. Did we ever have a driveway? This is the Macmillan thing. Did we ever have a driveway permit? From the guy across the road? Because damn it, I don't think I saw one, like.
He doesn't remember one. I was gonna go through the permits, because it would have been in the last year or two.
Yeah.
I don't know, is there any kind of order in the permits?
No. No, in fact, well, yeah, no.
Because that's.
Yeah.
At least half of the issue.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I'm just also gonna say that there have been other places I'm driving around town. Um and things here in the village too, where I'm like, oh, that looks like somebody's been digging in ditch. And I, I'm like, what are, what am I supposed to do about that? Like somebody who's putting in a new driveway has been digging and I don't think we saw a permit from that person.
So what do you do? Because the horse is already out of the barn.
Right, but we have asked, we have asked people to put one in retrospectively, right?
Yeah.
Um to say like, hey, you know, that, and, and it's, yeah, so I, I feel like there's a bit of. This probably needs to be discussed with Kyle and with, as a zoning administrator and also with the PC. Board, but I, I, I do think we need to start to say to people, no, you really do need to put in a permit. You know.
Because it can cause massive.
Cause a big issue now.
Yeah.
And nobody seems to remember them having a perm, driving a permit across the road.
We can just say, can you please send us a copy of your permit?
Yeah. But I'd like to just send, I'll try to send a reminder out on Front Porch Forum to just say like, I'm just kind of like noticing this, people. And remember, you're not supposed to burn trash. You're supposed to have permits if you're, if you're touching connection between your driveway and the road. And um even if you already have a driveway, you need to do that, check, check-ins. So, okay. Now, hearing of visitors.
We just talked to.
Baby birds, parents came, that's why I was. On the baby bird and. Parents are feeding it.
If you're kidding, huh?
She's it.
Good.
All right. Thank you, okay.
That was a short hearing of visitors. Let's go into correspondence, which is gonna be a little bit long. Okay. I want to start with the two that I have, um just because uh one of them is sort of a little bit of a leftover. So Ed Forley emailed me and said, hey, can I work with Mike about the snow stakes? And I'm like, ugh. And I didn't get back to him because I'm really bad because there's all this email flowing in. But my feeling is that we should not ever have a, a property owner. Where we've had a conflict in the past, go directly to our road commissioner and tell him something I don't know if we've told him. Right? We had it the last meeting. So I wanted to ask, has anybody followed up with Mike?
I have not. I think I was supposed to and I did not.
Because we were gonna follow up with the, sort of the road crew too about being. Observant of.
And move slower in certain spots and.
Okay, okay.
So maybe we do that as part of the conversation if we're gonna go talk about. Salaries and stuff and sort of other.
Okay.
So is that something we are going to do or is that something that I'm going to do? I, I don't care.
Whatever, yeah, wha, wha, whatever's easier. If you want to do it both, I mean, you were at both of those meetings and if that's an easy.
Well, I mean, I was, I'm talking about the, the snow steak thing. I don't feel like that's something. I think it's more, I think you guys should. The, yeah, I mean. I mean, we could do it all, but if we do it, we have to warn it and then.
Yeah, we don't need to go, yeah, I agree with you. It's not, it doesn't rise to that level.
Right, yeah.
You're right.
All right, who do I send my snow steaks picture to? I have just something I did some research. Okay, snow markers, plow, snow steaks. Let's see if I gave you anything. Yeah, there's just some. It's just some links I found and, you know, again, I don't even know half the time what lingo I am supposed to be using. But.
Did he say he was gonna pay for them? What, what?
He might be willing to do that. You know, it might be something like um. If, you know, that if somebody else comes to us and says, I'm unhappy with this. Um maybe we say, okay, well, you know, for the cost of this amount and in front of your property. We could mark it again, because again, it's not, they're not the only ones who have expressed that concern.
You just let the landowner mark their property and then nicely mention that they marked their property, because if we do it.
It's another task.
It's something else that we have to do.
But if we let them do it, they're gonna go closer to the center.
You're right, but I mean, it has to be.
Yeah.
You can move those snow sticks, doesn't matter where they go. If somebody doesn't like them, we're just gonna go here.
Right.
There, it's in the.
Yeah, well, I, I, I guess it's, it's, it needs to, from my perspective, it needs to be a little bit of joint problem solving. So whether they get put in with a road commissioner and Mike there or whatever, but I, I don't know that I just want. To say, sure, put them in where you're at.
I, I appreciate his enthusiasm and he wants to sort of zip this around, but it doesn't rise to the. It's, it's not my closest snake right now.
Yeah, I'll just let him know that, um that uh it's being handled through our road commissioners and please do not contact Mike directly. We will be back in touch.
Yeah.
All right, and this message just doesn't want to send because it wants to be. First, for snickety, but maybe I can get it out before the end of the evening.
Yeah, and having, yeah, having him go directly to Mike is gonna be.
Yeah, I just think, I just think it starts to set a precedent of.
Counterproductive.
Who manages, we manage their work. The, the, you know, people certainly can go out and try to talk to.
Well, Mike doesn't need all this added stress either.
He doesn't, he doesn't. It's not, he doesn't report to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Okay, all right, the next one that was on my list, um again, just came in today. Somebody from the Commons, a reporter from the Commons, wants to talk about the Green Mountain Power Zero Outages Initiative. And they, they said, I see Halifax as part of this project. Um she, she contacted me um at three twelve today and said, oh, you have a phone call this afternoon. I'm like, no. Or on Friday, when I am doing, um I basically ended, gonna end up taking another vacation day to do tax um assessment. Meetings all day. Um so um. I know normally if the press co, contacts us, it does normally go through the chair. Uh but I wanted to see if anybody else was itching to talk to, about this. I mean, I would like to present it as a balanced thing, like it hasn't been all. Roses for sure. Um but you know, on the balance, we know that this is a huge. Investment they're making in our community. So anyway, anybody else? I don't see, everybody's looking away from me. I will reach out to her and tell her what I.
Yeah, I mean, is. Yeah, well, I don't think it should be. Yeah, well, I don't think it should be something that we should get.
Right, I don't know, because. I guess they, I just saw. I just saw on Front Porch Forum, they're starting now in Guilford, so they started their first that.
Guilford and, and Marlborough. Keeps coming in, yeah, so, all right, I'll talk to them and I'll, but I will sort of say like, I'm really busy and so. I can like, send me your questions in advance, we'll have a twenty minute.
Yeah, that, that's actually a really good approach, send, send them in advance.
Longer to write than I do. All right, okay, those were, those were the things, I think, go ahead with, um we already did the website review. Um contract for F five.
So at the last meeting, um we, it was, we were authorized, or it's, you authorized me to uh. Put the Ford F five fifty on this auction site, which is uh Auctions International. Um in which they are going to come, take pictures of the truck and write it up and put it on the auction. So there's a contract here that we looked at last uh meeting and we did not sign, so we need to sign it. And is that something that I should sign or the Chair of the Board should sign?
Usually the Chair should sign it and then we need to make sure that I take a copy of it and that we get it in the file, so. Okay, um and. Did um Karen, did you read this in more detail or?
We both sort of.
We read it last time.
Not like.
I mean.
We, we read it pretty good, I mean, it's. He explained to us that if the vehicle. Does not meet what we think it's worth, then we, even if there's a high bidder, we are not required to sell it to that bidder.
And it, and it is as is, and so as far as, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't, we didn't have any latent liability.
Okay, so it's made on eight nineteen twenty twenty five. Between Town of Halifax and Mont.
And all the guy, I was waiting, because Mike and the guys were going to do a quick, just, you know, check it over. Clean it up, wash it and get it ready to go, and they hadn't had time to do it until now, so Mike contacted me today and told me it was all set. I will get ahold of that gentleman, he's gonna come and take photos of it and. As that, there's, there's a thirty dollar fee, thirty or thirty-five dollar fee.
Yeah, I see that.
For the photo taking.
Okay, um and. Oh lordy, I'm gonna give him, does anybody know the number here instead of my phone number?
Yeah, it should be Patty's. We should give her a copy of it though, so she knows why. What, her phone number?
In the search here, oh, those, because I get the two stuff, okay. Who remembers numbers now, when you can look it up on. Anyone, anybody know your? Seven three nine zero, I think.
Town Hall, seven three nine zero.
And the payment address, seller's agency payment address.
So it's two four, it's, I always put two forty-six Branch Road and then Post Office Box one twenty-seven. But I suppose you should put Post Office Box one twenty-seven first.
Okay, so seller agency payment address. I am gonna put Town of Halifax and that's all we need, we don't need the Vermont.
Yeah, and just do Post Office Box one two seven.
Eight, okay, so there's email address, um. Halifax Town Clerk.
And do you have to give her email, I guess?
Yeah, at Gmail.
Yeah, Halifax Town Clerk, yeah.
Okay, so we need a copy of this for Patty. Or, let's actually, let's make, make two copies. We'll put one in our contracts file and the other one will have handy, because we might need it. Yeah, okay.
Um there is also, just so you, you know, Randy, we had, uh we set up folders. Emily helped us do that last year, set up folders for every single vehicle, so in that folder should be everything from like the purchase agreement. You know, key, key maintenance things, so for that frock, we should. But just stick a copy in there at some point here, I know it's dup, I don't like having lots of duplicates, but.
Okay, um quote on the counterweight for excavator.
So it came to, because it came to my attention that the excavator. Is a little boom heavy and we uh had, there was a request for a. Uh additional counterweight for the back of the machine, that request or that uh. Number came through um from the guy who is the case salesman, um it is not a case uh. Manufactured item, they don't have one, but he contacted a company that builds these and it was ninety-eight hundred and sixty dollars for this counterweight. So I reached out to a local fabricator um. And he came up with a price of seventy-four hundred. And he went and looked at the machine, um. I know the guy personally, Mike knows the guy personally, other people probably know the Mike, the guy personally, um his name is Cole Boulvert. And when um metal fabrication, a great name of the company, but anyway, um in Whitingham. So I have a quote, so that's all I have right now.
So that's a couple thousand less.
Yeah, what we want to do or.
So this is just kind of an interesting side conversation, which is. Um I, I want to acknowledge that it's happening, because I think. Normally, right, when we purchase something, we go through the purchasing policy. And one of the things that I've seen, we've done a couple of times lately, it was like, you know, painting a vehicle and, you know, bodywork and whatever. Randy has gone off, found a quote, gotten something cheaper. How, how should we handle that in the context of, we have a purchasing policy, we didn't put this out to bid. Twenty-five thousand, so we don't need. Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess I just want to like say, right, that knowing the right people can be. A challenge, right, because maybe you don't know that there's somebody sitting next door to whoever this guy is that you all know. Who would do it for cheaper, right, so I'm just trying to say, we are a public body spending taxpayer money. Are we following the best procedures we can to make sure that we're, I mean, yes, we're finding. Deals, right, and that's good, but are we, do we need to think about, is there. I, again, I, I confess, I don't read our purchasing policy um anymore than I absolutely have to.
I think it's under twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, we have to trust our team and if. I was saying, oh, this is a good counterweight, y'all should say, yeah, no, we need to get someone else to look at that, if you've got Randy, you know, looking at it, he knows a little more about. What makes sense, so. I'm, I'm comfortable, certainly I'm comfortable with this.
You know, Mike had, we had gotten the other, uh actually, Mike got the answer first for the ninety-eight hundred and sixty dollar price. And we were just having to be talking and he told me about it, and I'm like, I wonder if we can get one cheaper. And kind of him and I at the same time mentioned who got, we got this quote from. And I said, I will be willing to, you know, do that for you, so you don't have to do it. And he was asking, you know, this is something that we could just purchase out of. Um repairs, equipment repairs, that's what he was saying. Um but he was also asking, is there another way to do it, so that's another whole conversation, I think it needs to go on an agenda. I just wanted to bring up tonight that we have this quote.
Okay, so let's do this, again, it wasn't on the agenda today, let's just put it on the agenda quickly for the next meeting. And I will, you know, I will try to review the purchasing policy, um but I'm, I actually have another ask of everyone here. Um because um the time by which we have to do our conflict of interest training. Um is rapidly arising and.
Didn't we already do that in January?
Some of you did. Some of us did, um but others have not, and so um Emily sent me the list of who has taken it. Um and sent her their um. Sent her their uh certificate or whatever we get from it, and of course, there we go, ethics training list. So I've done it, Karen's done it, Tom has done it and Nancy has done it, so I need the three of you to, to get online, get that training done. It takes about forty-five minutes, um and then there's a whole bunch of other people that need to do it, I, I mentioned it at the DCA meeting because. The, anybody who's sitting in a quasi judicial capacity, which means all of the zoning folks need to do it, that's Tom Fox is the only one who's done it. Um the listers actually need to do it, because they hear grievance hearings, and so that's, that's acting in a quasi judicial fashion. Um so I need to get the list out to everybody, but it is, it is important, because again, this is where, like. Like the financial thing, right, if somebody, if you had a buddy who was doing a deal for you on being on the select board and then you give them the business. Instead of giving it to the vendor, that's when we get ourselves into trouble, right, so. Um that's why, and that's why I'm, you know, like again, it's great that you're finding oh, another way to do stuff, um but we.
But it has to be arms length, I mean, the, the, the point is it has to be in arms length, that's what Randy's saying, oh. Cousin Fred, you know, is gonna do this.
Is that on the LCT? Where's that?
Um it is on the Secretary of State's um website and I will send you the.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually not a bad.
I mean, I've taken them over the years.
Exactly the same as anything.
Well, it's a little like, yeah, it's a little bit less than some of the stuff that I've had and some of the, like, my current company being in. Sort of, I guess, in your space of financial stuff, that's financial industry, um but um all of that to say, I mean, you know, basically. Uh I, I get paranoid, I get paranoid about, you know, trying to hire somebody to do work on my house. Are you, am I paying fair market rate, or are you trying to give me a deal, you know, whatever, right, you have to just be careful. Okay, cool, um we have on here the Bagley Williams right-of-way permit. You know, get that piece of paper and. We can talk about it.
Okay, we got ten minutes. We gotta go home for.
Lori just sent the snow steak pictures, I sent it to Mike, I just sent it to Mike and said, we should, we should talk.
Okay, it's uh seven forty-three. Right, what's next on our agenda?
Bagley Williams permit.
Thank. Once again.
Fourteen thirty-seven Hatch.
Hatch School. And we of course have another one here. Uh which I haven't, which Patty emailed me about today and said she had sent it to Mike, but it's not gonna be on the agenda today. So. This one.
Um you see the initial.
Yeah, do take a break. Will you give me that number on that one?
Fourteen thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Fourteen thirty-seven.
Right, if there's anything else in actual correspondence.
Arthritis stuff.
All the time.
There you go, my girl.
Okay.
Did you find the ID on that map?
I did find it on the mountain, all right, so um this is our new, on our new permit. Piece and we, we rejected it last time, we didn't discuss it last time, in part because we didn't have the book and page number on it. They came back, they put the book and page number on it, they did not put frontage on Town Highway. And I didn't have time to get back to them to tell them, you still didn't give us all the information.
Isn't the frontage the most important part, like otherwise they can't have a driveway.
But this, keep in mind, this one is a, an additional driveway. This one is an additional driveway on.
Where on Hatch School is it?
The intersection is, it's, if you're coming.
You mean with Hanson?
Yeah, uh no, no, back over by um. The, you know, if you take the left to go to the Pusys Bread and Breakfast. True, that's sure. It's right on that corner almost, right there.
Is it that piece of property or is it a different piece of property?
It's, this is, this is a fourteen thirty-seven Hatch Road, it's not, it's not on that corner.
I think he has additional.
Yeah, yep, and.
Because there's already, already a driveway on the house he's working on.
Is that that? Right on the corner?
At the intersection.
There's already a driveway there.
So if you come look at this map, you can see that it's, it's.
A different piece or is it that piece?
No, it's a different piece, it's over here. So it's this one here. Thirteen, fourteen thirty-seven, cool, okay, and there are, there is already a driveway there. Um but when I talked to Mike about it, he said that he wants another driveway to his sawmill. Which, which is.
So it's coming off.
It's still, yeah, it's still coming off a hatch wall. Well, it's kind of, it's kind of hidden, and I will say, like, I looked at it on, online, which we can do. And I, that's why I said, is this a new driveway, because it says it's a new driveway, and he's like, yes, it's a new driveway.
See, I thought, I thought it was this house you were talking about, where the new construction is. So it's this side stuff.
And Mike said he talked to him about the two culvert and they understood that. And I also sent this one to um. I sent this to Dennis, because I'm like, this is a new driveway. To a, to a, to an occupancy that is more prone. Perhaps, or they might want to think differently about how they would approach it with a, with sawmill, right, but sawmills catch on fire a lot.
Or, well, someone.
Yeah, where someone gets a little bit of fire, right. All of that to say, he, he said he would look at it and maybe give us a new, a new E nine one one number. But because there's already, like, so here's my thing, I would like to sign this permit regardless of the fact that this line isn't filled out. Knowing that there's already driveways on there, that Mike has looked at it and I, I don't, I don't want to take. More time to, to, to sign something when I sort of said you need to give us the right information and.
Well, why don't you, why don't you say, ask them to.
Can we?
Finish it before they commence work.
Or can we say it's approved pending completion of. The paperwork, you know, that you need to put this information on.
Yeah.
Because we, I mean.
Because I mean, I, you know.
I appreciate that you guys know where it is, but they have to have enough frontage. How much room do you need for two driveways?
I don't, I think it matters for two driveways for frontage as long as you period have. Right, which he obviously does, because there's already one driveway.
How much room do you need for a driveway, like, do you get to a point where you have one driveway and there's no room for a second one, I guess that's.
Mike already looked at it.
I just feel like I don't.
I mean, I think he, the line should be filled in.
Yeah, I agree, I would do it pending that.
Okay, so then, just, you know, as a note, again, this process of like. Okay, but I just, I want to be clear that the.
Yellow, you have to fill out these items in yellow or we won't even look at it.
Yeah, that's changing the form and having to upload.
Color block in, it's not changing uh.
Yeah, it takes two minutes.
Alright.
Never reinstructions.
Right, well, that's the different thing.
Yeah. Alright, so, so um. Conditions say two foot culvert needed. Um. Please add. Road frontage. To this form.
And our approval is conditional upon.
Right.
Doing that. I don't want it to, otherwise Patty's like, I'm gonna be waiting for somebody to.
Yeah, I'm. Sign.
Before they commence work.
Approved with conditions.
Yeah.
Conditions of this permit, please add road frontage to this form before. Okay. Okay, passing that around for signatures. And then the next one that we have here is.
Oh, and do we need, does something about Dennis? Does that, does Dennis's approval need to be conditional? Cause if Dennis comes back and says.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come, no, I, I don't think. I think all that he could do is say, here's the new number that could somehow get back on the form, but. I need to actually write out a workflow. Who sees it? When does it get to us? Cause this sort of thing happens where, right, this one came in today. Patty said, hey, there's another form in your box. But we had said we would not fi- sign forms until we put them on the agenda. And I don't have, I haven't looked to see if um. Like, is this even the right form? It doesn't look the same to me.
Think, where did they get this? Like an old form or something?
Um.
Yeah, then they should.
They switched it, I mean, like, does this, that, that form and that form look nothing alike to me? And it's got, you know, I'm just kind of in this, like, I don't know, I just pulled it out of the box now.
Sometimes there's forms online for Halifax. I'm just theorizing that people may get something, you know, they don't come here, but.
Yeah.
Googled and found forms.
Okay.
And sometimes when you print things, they come up funny.
Yeah, they.
But this looks like our information. I'd have to.
Driveway standards thing, the, the.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't have A, B, and C. It should have all the attachments.
That it doesn't.
Yeah, no.
I just look at, look at it and go, it doesn't.
Yeah, this needs atta- they all need, even this one needs attachment A, B, and C.
Right, it does.
So it should have attachment A for this one.
Comes back to you.
To me and I'm like.
The reason being, if they have, if they're cutting through something, they need to say, okay, it's an unpaid road. This is.
But I looked and saw that they did it two days ago. I'm like, I gotta go. And I, and I didn't have time.
This is the little things.
Yeah.
And, and.
And it doesn't, it needs to have the attachment. The attachments should never be disengaged from this document.
So let me.
That's why they're attachments.
Well, but let me ask about that again, like, what part of this is getting, having to be put in the vault? And.
The attachment that's pertinent to the work. So if it's a driveway, attachment A. If it's an unpaved road, attachment B. If it's a paved road, attachment C. It's got schematics on it and it's got rules of how the work is being done. The, the permit is useless without the attachments. Cause it's not telling them how to do the work and they're not, they're not acknowledging that they will do the work that way.
So, just to be clear. He checked the box driveway culvert town highway, blah, 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 um, for exhibit A. Subject to exhibit A.
Right.
But on page exhibit A, is there any work that he's to fill out or is that just?
No, it just has to be. Yeah, it has to be attached to the. That's why when you do something, you have exhibits and attachments. They're part of the document. They're, they're not.
That goes back to him, but it doesn't have to be recorded because. I don't.
Why, it's one, it's a.
I just, I'm, I'm just like.
Why wouldn't it be recorded? Because if somebody comes and looks, ten years later, did you get a permit? Okay, where's this exhibit A?
But he did.
Exhibit A could have changed. Yeah, but exhibit A could change from one year to the next. So it has to be, it has to be recorded. It absolutely has to be recorded.
Alright, so that's, that's. Patty, right? But again, th- this whole, like, how do we, how do I, I need a checklist to determine completion. Because before I put this next one on here, we go through that same process.
Yeah, cause this is.
Cause I, you know, again, there.
Can't do anything with that one.
So the only way to really do this is to, or in my opinion, to do that is to have a bound. Permit, like something that is completely all together with that page.
It is. It's a PDF that is all together.
Right, but it's not stapled together, so he's.
Well, he should have stapled it. Right. Yeah, but he should have put, it, 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 it sort of boggles my mind that you have a, a, attachments and.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but it just, it's like, not everybody's going to.
Well.
There's, there's not great instructions that all.
You know, I think sometimes you can do is have like a routing sheet on top.
Hmm, oh, that's true.
Um.
It's a signature. This is what, that Mike has to look at it.
Sent back again because, while you missed this, and then finally at the very bottom, you check the box that says complete and approved.
Yeah, a routing sheet's a great idea.
These permits take a lot of our time.
They do.
They, yeah.
They do.
Cause you gotta keep reading through to see, well, what's not here?
Yeah, the ru- then the routing sheet.
And this stuff gets to us. You know, like, can I say, Patty, you need to check this, this, and this before I ever get stuffs? Because she's accepting money for it and then we go back.
Money should be paid. Just to fill out the permit.
With the application. It is an application fee, right? Um, and um. Um.
So, are we signing this?
Uh, no, no, not without the exhibit attached. So.
I'm not.
Okay, but if we, if we sit here and, and print that exhibit off right now, we have it on a flash drive. If we go print that off and attach it. We've already put the condition that they need to fill out this one form. Can we get this process done?
Yeah, we could do, we could do that. As long as the, right, as long as the owner recognizes what they're doing. So sure, I could do that.
I mean, the, the problem is, is we, we can approve everything all day long.
Right.
It's up to them to actually do it right.
Right.
If they don't do it right, that's kinda on them.
Right, and so if they have to do it thirty times, they gotta do it thirty times.
Does Mike have a final check off or sign off once they?
There is on the bottom. They're supposed to be.
With their call.
They're supposed to be.
I don't know that that, like, I think we had a long, well, anyway. Alright, we'll keep trying to work on this.
Final.
Signing this?
So, this is the.
I mean, I feel like.
Yeah, so exhibit A driveway standard.
Getting away with it not being filled out right, if we sign it and just. I don't know, how do you, how do you hold? An accountable to do it right?
I don't know, so. So when we. So after we sign the form. Patty. I'd like a copy of it, cause I'd like a copy to get into our files so that we have a record of who.
I, 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 no, I, I mean, well, I was. We don't have enough room in there. We have a formal file for the town and then it becomes like, it's a, I don't know. It's not a personal file, but I mean.
It's not, it's not a personal file, but so when I sign my name to a document, I ought to be able to put my hands on that document at least a copy of it.
When you do, on this, it will be filed in there, am I correct?
Yes, the original is.
The original, that's the most important thing. I hear what you're saying.
It goes in the vault.
It, it, and it gets recorded somewhere and then we have to go look it up again and instead of being able to say, did, didn't we sign Pete Silverberg's? Thing, which we did before, and then we're like, where did it go? We didn't have a copy of it. And, you know, like, if we're kind of.
I'm sorry, did you take it out there?
I'm looking, I might have left it.
I feel like, uh. Should help with that. finalized and ready to go in the vault, or ready to copy, ready to go. Do you know what I mean?
Patty puts everything in the vault, I think. That's her, that's what.
Yeah, Patty, she's supposed to record it on, and that's the date recorded and stuff on the, on the bottom of this form, right? So, alright, so.
I mean, every permit ever done, she should have on file.
In theory. But then if we don't, like, and this is why I insisted that they, they should be on the agenda so that we can say, yes, we talked about Pete Silverberg's. Agenda or.
Which, which makes sense. I, and I think that's, I think that's.
Yeah.
That's absolutely right. Alright, let me see if I can get a copy. I'm getting a copy.
Getting, if we're getting.
I'm getting a copy.
Attachment, attached to.
Exhibit A.
Put the condition, please fill out the rest of this, then I think we should.
It's good.
It's good.
Alright, sorry that these things are taking so long, but you know, again, just a little.
Well, it's just we're trying to.
It's a process that is not going smoothly ever since we changed it to improve the form. Um.
You know, I think it, I think it should, maybe if we add a sentence in there.
Fill out the damn.
Can we add a sentence in the instructions that say, if you do not, these have to be put on the agenda to be signed. If you do not fill it out correctly, it gets postponed.
It should be right at the very top. It should be the very.
In other words, read the instructions, fill it out correctly.
I mean, redo the forms.
Any government form, you fill out incorrectly, it's.
And, and so if somebody else who was, who I had said, if you're gonna do that, you need to do a permit, and what they came back was like, man, what a form. Like, again, it's like multiple pages. It's much longer than it used to be. I don't, that, but, but.
Really?
So what? Fill out the form, find out the part that pertains to you, fill it out.
I know my paperwork better be done right when I do my paperwork.
Oh, sure. I bet you do.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty easy form. Okay, let's move on.
Yes.
Thank you. Um.
Okay.
That would be the end of our correspondence according to the notes that I have. Okay. So next we do approval of previous meeting minutes and. Um, Emily, can you pull those up? Because I have to confess, this was not something I was able to get to this time. I gave you a couple of. Um, names in advance, but that was as far as I got.
Yes, I can pull those up right now.
Thank you.
Six pages.
I read it over, I, I believe I did.
Alright, can you see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Should we say? Yeah, so um, could you please correct Mike McConnell's name? In the call to order, it's M C, capital C O N N E L L, I believe.
Hmm.
And could you correct Mariah Huffman's name? Her first name is spelled to look like Maria, but it is pronounced as Mariah. And you got the very tricky Betty Roberts, right? So that's good.
You spell, um.
M A R I A. It looks like Mariah, but it's pronounced like Mariah. Yeah.
Wow, gotcha.
Okay, and alright, so those are good.
Should we put under the incoming credit card payments, um. This information that's supplied here was um, Patty. Should we put her name on here somewhere that Patty has?
Sure, yep. Patty Dell. Provided information about.
About paying.
And then just uh, pull that sentence up about paying the property taxes, so, yep. Did anybody check the spelling of the Hammer Enterprises? I saw that piece of paper in there.
There's a couple of different, I Googled it. For the spelling, but there's a few different ones around in different. Areas, I think.
One M.
One M.
Yep. Okay. See. Um. Uh, can you, does anybody else understand the sentence, this option may reduce delinquent tax amounts? Oh, the o- the option for credit card.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Looks fine.
Okay. And then there's two, there's two hammers. The next one down. Is just above your cursor where it's blinking, so then, yep. Um. And let's put, could be added. To the Halifax website. Instead of will be, cause we're still in discussion with them. So the Hammer website could be updated. Okay, could be added, perfect, okay. So, does anybody remember on the marathon if there was actually gonna be a volunteer stationed at the Moss Hollow intersection? Okay. Um, okay, can you scroll down?
Had enough?
When I say the best part.
There's a lot of good stuff yet.
Hi.
See you later.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so in this, in the plans and use for the Old Town Garage property. Um, the one acre parcel was not historically used by the Halifax EMS.
Well, it wasn't.
It, it, yeah, it was not. They had. Yeah, so we can just take that out.
Yeah.
Um, we can say the one acre parcel is town owned and, and tax exempt. Um. Okay, and then you can just delete the rest of that sentence, thank you. Um, the, the, it's, maybe we say its use as a former town garage. Cause that's where we used to do it. So its use as a former town garage potentially makes it unsuitable. There we go.
I think Karen was checking like tissue on that, right?
Yeah.
Whole street is, is FEMA blood thing.
Well. Yeah.
It's all flooded.
Yeah.
When Irene came here.
So, yeah, and they're, they're updating the FEMA map, so we don't really have the final on those yet. Um. So. I, I'm, I would like to take out the part while selling the property poses no risk to the town, because I, I don't know that that's an accuracy.
We don't really know.
Yeah, so let's, let's just say, um. The board, um, li- yeah, uh. The board will check with town council.
Yeah.
About sale. Options, maybe is enough.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you. Alright, into the animal control.
It's pretty good so far.
And when we get to it, I wasn't sure, um, what Kim and Chris's. Last name is.
Yeah, okay, um, before we get to it, let's go up, um. To. Um. There's a section in here. That talks about voting. Sorry, I'm gonna have to come up, stand next to the screen again. Um. So I wanna say to allow for. Hmm. We wanna say, let's, let's start the sentence, it's recommended the ordinance be drafted in time. For the next town meeting. Let's take that first piece out, cause basically the town doesn't. Need to vote on an ordinance, so Edwards attended a V L C T section, session outline, that's fine. That's, that first sentence is fine. But the next sentence, let's take out the first clause up to the comma. Um. And what we wanna say is. It's recommended that the ordinance be drafted. In time for the next town meeting, in case. Uh. The voters. The voters wish to overturn it. Okay, I think that's there, and the, the it's became a double T instead of an I T S, sorry, at the beginning of the sentence. So much easier to see when you blow it up like that. Okay.
Probably looks pretty small on your screen.
Yeah, I know, it looks good now, but I'm still standing close, because I've been driving all day, so standing feels. So Sue Kelly, uh, so down to Kim and Chris, their last name is L E H. N E R, is that right?
L E H N E R.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that part.
And so Kim and Chris's last name, where you've got the yellow highlight, is L E H. N as in Nancy E R. Okay? Alright, I guess we can scroll down, a little business now. On the sentence that starts with the. If it's, let's take the Wyndham Regional Commission sentence out entirely. Um, because I'm just, I'm not sure. I think the pro, I'm not sure that, I think that those are one and the same, so let's just leave it as, if it qualifies as a town highway, the select board could vote to discontinue its use. And yeah, the next sentence is great. Okay, I like the four Lee Hoffman, I think that's concise and does the job.
But snow stakes instead of steds.
Oh yeah, snow stakes. Spelling S, nope, spelling S T A. K E S.
Medium rare.
Well.
Perfect, okay. And then down at the next paragraph, we've got Mike McConnell again, M C instead of O'Connell. Okay, thank you. Okay, two sentences down under the website updates. The Mini Merp Grant, it's like, let's just say the website updates. Estimate has been received, and take the Mini Merp Grant out of it, it was a grant, but the grant. And the grant will pay for part of it, but what we were really looking at there were the website update. Estimate had been received.
Which line are you on, Edie?
I'm on, under, um, it started off with the Mini Merp.
Yeah.
Grant.
Further up. Uh, let me just ask this question. Uncertainty whether the grant covers advertising costs, which are required under Halifax's purchasing policy. Wasn't it stated by, I forgot the gentleman's name?
Mike.
Mike, that, that would be.
Yeah, I think he did.
That would be included?
Or his do, his duties, so, yeah. Gotten from that was that, um. Maybe I was under the impression that they would. Abide by Halifax's purchasing policy since. Halifax has one, but I'm not sure if that's what he was trying to get at.
Yeah, no, I think, and I think you're reminding me of the conversation, Emily, it was, was kind of about, he was like, oh, there are three places to advertise, and I'm like, well, but. To put it here, so yeah, with this, I think it's very. To say, um, the, um. Uh, it will be important to follow Halifax's purchasing policy.
Yeah, and my note, my notes say, no cost and will be with our purchasing policy, so.
Yeah, and, and that kind of comes back to this question about, do we, do we have to advertise if it's less than twenty five thousand, yes or no, right? And that's, again, something else we talked about today, okay, um. Okay, back down to the website update paragraph.
I think it's five fire media.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, five, five, five media.
Five, like, one, two, three, four, five? Yeah, but, but we type out F I V E. Yeah, that's how it's on there saying, okay. Okay. Five fifty update. That looks okay.
Good, yeah.
Yep. Scroll down again. Under the Hardison permit, in the fifteen inch culvert. So. Down to the Hardison one. Okay, I can keep scrolling. Think I see anything else here, can continue to scroll to the bottom. Alright. And then if you can scroll once more, and we can see the adjournment. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from, hmm, August. Fifth, as amended. Do I have a second?
Second, um, maybe.
So, actually, it says at the top of the form, July fifteenth.
Oh.
Can we go to the very top of that, real quick?
Sorry, yeah, I corrected that.
Okay, okay.
Nope. Thank you for the reminder.
I guess August fifth.
No, August, yep.
Awesome.
Alright. So Edwards and Ashcraft accept the amendment to the, to the date, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries five zero, okay. Next up, we have the select board order, I believe that everybody has looked at this besides me. Um, so as I look at it, I'm gonna just ask a couple of questions here, did anybody happen to know if the, um. The fee on the collection for the Casella thing is the new amount, correct?
The ninety dollars?
Uh, then, so it's four twenty-two, and then there's a silver, a little off.
Well, I don't know, I did, I did not.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm mostly curious.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm guessing that they did, because I think that the highway one, it was updated.
That's the account number, six.
Six, seven, one, five.
Wow, just, you know, it's a big one, that's, that's cool. That's good to have. It's, it's every, every, different people have different things, and so you can't just have a generic-y one, because it's already getting to trouble. Right, where am I?
Can I ask on this Nemrick software, one Karen, you had asked about an additional module, that's not included in here.
It's no, because I thought, it's in the budget for the fixed assets, and we may have, you know, I recall having a conversation and saying, well, you don't really need that, because. You know, we don't have buildings and those sorts of big structures, but we do have heavy equipment, which can be a fixed asset, as long as they're, I, I. I'm fine if we don't have it, I just have to talk to Patty, as long as they do depreciation pattern.
Okay, yeah.
Without it.
On the back, there's a list of five modules that have been purchased with different, no, ten modules total.
Yeah. And the fixed assets are not in there.
Okay, and this particular invoice, yeah.
We should pay it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to match the invoice versus the modules that we've got, but it's all listed here. And then, um. Hearing notice for. What we will add.
Yeah, the tear sheets are never on there. And they should be, and I asked her for them, so I know she sends them, or she's, does she always send them?
Okay, so the amount of the order is eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. For the record.
Did you read that?
Was that again?
Did, eight thousand, what? Nine, four, two, four, five. Thank you.
Sure, question.
Did you, did we add the?
I did.
You did.
It was correct.
Alright, I'm looking at Casella real quick. There goes it, I'm gonna come up.
Thank you for this copy, Karen.
Oh, yeah, just so we have it handy.
Yeah.
Okay, what are we looking for, seven, one, five, hold on. Untracked recycling. It's nineteen oh oh nine.
Yeah, we put this in there now.
Okay, it'll attach, and it's got the condition that that top line.
Be filled in.
Yeah, yeah, as long, yeah, as long as the person, and, and I, we just have to make sure that Patty records those, because you could change the exhibit, and ten years later, you don't know what you actually. Were told you had to do, so we, we wouldn't be able to say something, did something wrong, without those attachments. So, I don't know, wh- what was, what was the amount for Casella recycling, because all we have is nineteen thousand oh oh nine, so am I supposed to divide that by twelve?
Uh, I think it might be more, um, i- it might be easier to look at what their bid amount was. And this is, this is another thing that's been hanging out, I asked them for a, um. I asked them for a contract, because we didn't have one for the last couple of years with them, they sent me one, and I'm like, yeah, yeah, I gotta read that, and I haven't been able to read it to review it, but.
So do you want me to go through the bids and see what it, it says?
It's a little bit of idle curiosity, because they're pretty good at billing. They take the trash away, and they're good at billing, um. And keep in mind, that was the bid that I did, right?
Oh, I may not have it then.
Yeah.
I don't think I do have it, I've got commodities and different roads, and. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it on, I don't have it on my, um. Nice smile here.
Alright, it's, it's, again, I'm gonna assume that the bill is correct, as it was, so, um. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, we'll second that.
Okay, I made a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I, you want me to do it?
I made, no, I made it.
You made it.
And now, and you said.
I seconded it, yeah.
Alright.
Get a little excited.
No, all those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion carries five zero, it is eight twenty-seven PM, um. Stop the recording, thank you, Emily, we will see you next.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Bye, Emily.
Thank you.